Um, so we'll check which number we put my door?
Uh, try again.
Uh, we haven't, can you hear us? No.
Can you hear us now? Okay. Um.
Our mics are on.
Okay. They're at... It's three. Or... Guys, you're hearing me actually through my computer one, so you're getting feedback.
But this isn't the mics that should be working, so hold on, we have some technical difficulties.
Oh, boy. Does that happen a lot?
It's typically once a month, we have something that is more than just a blown tire. Cause like, with tires, probably say, two to three a month, I have to get a tire replaced. Somebody drives over a nail and we can't patch it because it's on the sidewall. And for the most part, higher like forty, fifty bucks, because we have contracted rates to buy thousands of tires in here. Like, you know, just across the country, it's not bad. It's typically one couple. It's always super weird, but last time Pence came in, we rented thirteen submarines. To the Secret Service.
Rain or snow? Rain or snow? Right?
Yeah, at least with snow, like, just light little flakes is fine. Bonfire would probably melt it before it came near ya. Guys, you're hearing me actually through my computer one, so you're getting feedback. But this isn't the mics that should be working, so hold on, we have some technical difficulties.
Oh, boy. Does that happen a lot?
It's typically once a month, we have something that is more than just a blown tire. Cause like, with tires, probably say, two to three a month, I have to get a tire replaced. Somebody drives over a nail and we can't patch it because it's on the sidewall. And for the most part, higher like forty, fifty bucks, because we have contracted rates to buy thousands of tires in here. Like, you know, just across the country, it's not bad. It's typically one couple. It's always super weird, but last time Pence came in, we rented thirteen submarines. To the Secret Service.
Rain or snow? Rain or snow? Right?
Yeah, at least with snow, like, just light little flakes is fine. Bonfire would probably melt it before it came near ya. Tim's coming. Hold on, can you guys hear us? No. Ready to go? Okay.
Okay. Thanks, everybody, for your patience. Um, this is the December sixteenth, New Market Town Council meeting, and I will, uh, call it to order, and we will start, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
For the United States of America, due to the public, which stands, one nation, under God, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Chair of the COVID-19 Coronavirus Crisis, in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 2020-04, has determined that the Town Council is authorized to meet. Please note that there is a physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously. Um, however, a majority of the council is not here. Uh, public is allowed to attend. However, in accordance with emergency order, this is to confirm that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other. We're using, we're utilizing the Zoom platform for this meeting. All members of the council have ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through Zoom, and the public has access to listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the phone number, six, five, five, eight, eight, six, five, six, and the access code, seven, zero, two, five, seven, two, seven, or by, uh, the link on the town website, newmarketnh.gov, and watching Channel thirteen locally. We are providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing this meeting. On how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided on the town's website at newmarketnh, and provide a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. Please call six oh three, six five nine, three six one seven, extension one three two one. And if there is a, a issue, uh, we'd be adjourning the meeting, uh, at another time. Votes that we have to be taking by roll call, and Madam Chair, if you, the attendance, and ask each member their presence, and state whether they're, anyone in the room with them during this meeting.
So, I will start. Um, I can't see everyone, so, um, if I, if I miss anyone, please, just give me a shout. So, um, first, uh, Counselor Burns.
Hi, um, it was, uh, I wasn't able to attend tonight, and there is nobody in the room.
Thank you. Counselor Kuiper.
I was unable to attend, and I'm alone.
Uh, Counselor Brayback.
I was unable to attend in person tonight, and I am alone.
Um, Counselor Sanders.
I was unable to attend in person, and I am alone.
And Counselor Blackstone.
You're on mute, Counselor.
I was unable to attend, and I'm alone.
Thank you, and that's...
Should be everybody. There's everyone. Um, just a good chance to explain this as well. All members not in the room are muted, and should, uh, if you need to request to speak, then, um, if you're not a counselor, please use the Raise Your Hand feature on Zoom. If you're a counselor, please use your Novus Agenda software.
Thank you. Um, the first item that we have is a public forum. So, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight? I'm seeing none, I will close the, uh, public forum at seven fifteen. And then next, we have a public hearing. Um, and that is for ordinance number four, the floodplain protection overlay district amendments. And, um, I don't know, Mr. Town Manager, if you wanted to...
Um, if you want to open the public hearing?
Yes, I'll open the public hearing at seven sixteen.
And I'm going to turn this over to the Community Development Director, Diane Hardy.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Town Manager and Madam Chairman of, or Chair of the Town Council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Uh, we're here this evening to have a public hearing on a zoning ordinance. As some of you may know, we do have a floodplain overlay district in our ordinance, and we have a series of maps that are, have recently been updated by our friends, um, at the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And there are seven maps, I believe, that have been posted on phone core boards and are situated and on display in the auditorium this evening, so if anyone would like to review those. Um, they are also available at the Town Hall and online at a special website that will provide that information to you later. Um, I'm here this evening with Jennifer Gilbert, and Jennifer is with the Office of Strategic Initiatives. She's the floodplain manager, she's been in the capacity there for over fifteen years. Um, and I'd ask Jennifer to come and very briefly give us an overview of the floodplain management program and, um, give some context to our changes that we have been going this evening. Thank you. Uh, Jennifer, would you please, would you please join us for a discussion? Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Diane. Um, good evening, everybody. Uh, I'm going to try to share my screen here, just to show a few slides, just give a brief overview of the project. I can't use it.
Yep. There's a bottom of the screen, there's a, a green tab that says Share Screen, do you see that?
Yeah, it says the host is disabled, um, this bit's being shared.
I think I just allowed it, so let me try it one more time.
Allow Jennifer to screen, thank you.
There we go.
Yeah. Is it okay? Yep.
All right. See it okay?
Yep.
All right. So, as Diane mentioned, FEMA is releasing new floodplain maps in the coastal regions, allowing New Market and fourteen other communities in the project area. Um, this project actually started back in two thousand eleven. Um, we had preliminary maps released in twenty fourteen in community formation meeting and appeal period. Uh, you can see on the screen, uh, between appeal period and the recent release of the letter filed with termination, there's a six-year gap, there's a lot of, um, pull-ups, including a two-year appeal, um, that was resolved. Um, we are currently in the six-month adoption compliance period, and we are working with all the communities to get them, um, to adopt the maps and get their ordinances compliant. Um, just briefly, there was several different analysis that were done along the coast, and some... Um, one of the biggest updates to the maps is the upgraded topographic data. Um, this upgraded topographic data is just much more accurate. Um, so what we see is that a lot of the floodplain areas have actually shrunk just because the floodplains are being overlaid onto more accurate, um, data. This table gives you an indication of the, um, the change between the current two thousand five special flood hazard area in acres versus the two thousand twenty-one pending, um, maps. Um, New Market, it was number fourth in the greatest amount of acreage decrease in special flood hazard area, um, just due strictly to the, uh, more detailed topographic data. Um, one of the biggest changes in New Market is there was a, uh, riverine analysis on the Lambeau River, which created a floodway, um, which New Market did not have previously. This connects to the floodway that's already, that was already present in the town of Durham, so it just continues it across the, uh, town boundary. This is the illustration of where that floodway is going to be appearing. On the left is the current two thousand five map. Um, this is, the yellow line up here is town of Durham, um, town line. This is North Main Street. This is what it currently looks like, and this is the two thousand twenty-one maps that are going to go effective in January. And that includes the floodway. The floodway is a, the most hazardous part of the floodplain, um, so it comes with more restrictive regulations because, in essence, you don't want to be building in there, so you do have to meet higher standards in order to develop in that area. Um, so those additional regulations are being added to the ordinance. Um, just to briefly, the, the look of the hard copy of the maps is just a little bit different, a little bit of new symbology, new orientation. It is, uh, much more clear than it was, uh, on the current maps, so that was an improvement. Um, to access the maps, the easiest way to do it is to just, to an internet search for New Hampshire Flood Hazards Viewer, that is the Office of Judicial Initiatives. That is our viewer, um, you can view both the effective and the pending maps, and you can see the changes that are happening on that. The FEMA Map Service Center also has that information, but right now, our viewer is by far the easiest to look at the, um, information. As far as letter of map amendments that have been issued by FEMA, um, these are the amendments. Um, property owners can apply to FEMA to get their property removed, or their structure removed from the, um, special flood hazard area. And for the town of New Market, there was a final summary of map action that was sent in July, um, that dictated what, uh, letter of map amendments will be revalidated. I did check that all of the map, uh, letter of map amendments are going to be automatically revalidated, and the town will receive a revalidation letter, which will be issued the day after the maps become effective in January. Um, the town is going to be a repository for this list, um, so if property owners, um, that have a valid, revalidated Loma, um, and they have a call from their lender, or a letter from their lender saying, um, that the new maps have gone effective, they can, um, contact the town to get that. It will also be on the FEMA Map Service Center, and as well as in my office as well. Um, there is a potential change for flood insurance for property owners if there is a change in their current and new flood zone. Um, the best advice I give is to take a look at the new maps and compare it to what they're, what the property is in now on the current maps, and to talk to your existing insurance agent about possibilities for lower-cost options if you're, um, if you're flood-risked. And finally, as I mentioned, we're in the community compliance process right now. Um, FEMA requires communities to update their ordinances with the updated, uh, flood insurance rate map and flood insurance study. So, we're, again, we're working with communities to get them all set and ready to go for the new maps to become effective. Um, and then this is our contact information, where it's, um, if you just Google New Hampshire floodplain program, you'll be able to find us, um, through an internet search. That's, uh, the overview of the project. And happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak?
I have nobody on, from the public, on, online, and there's no public present.
Okay. Then I will, um, because we'll have an opportunity as counselors to discuss the, it comes up, um, later on, uh, on the agenda, um, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing at seven twenty-four. Thank you. Oh. Diane, you're muted. You're still...
You're muted.
Oh, there you are. Nope, nope.
Yep.
Will I have an opportunity later to...
Yes.
...go over some recommending boards?
Yep, that's when you do it.
So I'll hold off, thank you. And thank you very much, Jennifer, for your, uh, great, very succinct presentation, we appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, then moving on, the next item, uh, that we have on our agenda is, uh, to consider the acceptance of minutes, and we have, um, minutes from our meeting on December second, two thousand twenty, and I would accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December second, two thousand twenty.
Are there any changes or questions, concerns? Seeing none, so if you could call the board, please. How's it doing? Aye. How's it, Sanders?
Aye.
So, Blackstone?
Counselor, you're muted.
Aye.
Counselor Brayback?
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper? Counselor Burns?
Aye.
Counselor Weiss?
Aye.
Motion passes, yes. Thank you. And then the next item is the, uh, report of the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm going to go through my report, then I know the police chief has a presentation, um, after. First item is I want to give a COVID-19 update. Um, in my written report, as of December ninth, we had nine, or zero point zero nine percent of the population, hundred and two, or one percent of the population cumulative cases. Over the last fourteen days, we had thirty-three cumulative cases. There were three thousand five hundred tests, and have been issued, and, uh, and people have been tested, or thirty-seven percent of the population, one thousand nine hundred forty people were tested two weeks ago. So, now, with a week's difference, nine positive cases, now we have fifty-six positive cases, with zero point five percent of the population. A hundred and forty-two cumulative cases, or one point five percent of the population, have tested positive for COVID-19. There have been seventy new cases over the last fourteen days, and three thousand seven hundred eighty-three people have taken PCR tests, or the, not, the non-rapid tests, while forty percent of the population has been tested. So, we are seeing the Thanksgiving period end of sentence. Can't express enough that we encourage people not to travel during the next holiday, next week, and this is the reason why. We're seeing the, a spike in the number of cases, and we ask people to try to limit their, um, interactions. We're seeing the, a spike in the number of cases, and we ask people to try to limit their, um, interactions. That being said, I also want to make another statement. That, you know, over the last nine, nine months, we've been bravely fighting this pandemic. We've done and continue to do amazing things in this community, and we see a light at the end of the tunnel with the distribution of the vaccine. But we should recognize that we're going to have very tough weeks ahead. We cannot and will not give up. We need to continue to work together to get through this. We all have continuously tried to make everyone's life as safe and as normal as possible. From opening parks to reopening businesses, we have strived to make sure people can still do things with reasonable safety protocols in place. We have to realize that this is still vastly different for everybody. Most, many people are getting bombarded with mixed messages and so-called experts on social media. Citizens should work to stop disseminating opinions and falsities as facts. Please make sure the information you receive is from a reputable source. And if you ever have a question, please call the town at 603-659-3617. You can call my office, you can call the police department, you can call the fire department, you can call the health officer. We will get you the right information. We are seeing way too much information spread on social media from not reliable sources, and it's giving false information, which is dangerous. We also strongly encourage people to stop the public shaming of businesses and people. Businesses are trying right now. They're trying to stay open to make life easier for you, their employees, and they are just trying to survive. They're trying to operate with less staff, less customers, and more rules that they, that can and do change daily. We need to be patient and work together to ensure they survive and our community survives. Businesses are the backbone of the community, and if they fail, we all fail. Public shaming by posting on social media does little to help our community get through this trying time. We forget how a small statement on Facebook or Twitter can spread like wildfire and have catastrophic effects on someone's life without checking facts first. We continue to be in this together, but this is not the public's job to enforce the regulation and laws. If you see something you perceive as a violation at a business, please do the following. Politely let the business owner know. Contact the health officer at 603-659-3617, extension 1311. Or call the state attorney general's COVID violation line at 603-271-1225, or email at EO40issues@doj.nh.gov. I can't say this enough, we're in this together. We've seen what happens in this last week if we're not in this together. This community's worked tirelessly over the past nine months, and we need to continue to work hard for the health of our community and the prosperity of our businesses for the ability to return to normal. On the good side, as everyone knows, the last week, the Pfizer vaccine was approved by the FDA, and we should be hearing very shortly whether or not the Moderna vaccine, um, is being approved. That being said, we're moving as forward as though it will be. As soon as we receive the vaccine in the state, our first responders will be taking, taking it if it's their option. We've been notified that they will be taking it at the Exeter High School. This could be soon, as next week, and as for the general population, we'll wait for the state to provide that information. Now, session, we've received guidance from the HMA and the Attorney General's Office on how we can hold deliberative session in January. My previous thing, that I was correct that we could hold two virtual sessions without the public in order to comply with the six-foot rule for attendees. However, the law that was written last spring only allows for Election Day to be drive-through. We have proven from primary election in September, the general election in November, that we can successfully carry out a safe election in person by our preferring absentee ballots in the proper protection at the polls. The drive-through method was thought before we proved, we proved that we could do this. I have legal counsel working with the Attorney General's Office and other municipalities to see if we can do this, do both the remote, uh, meetings and in-person election. The schools have indicated that they're willing to work with us on this as well. Attorney Radigan has been talking with the Attorney General's Office and the Elections Bureau. They completely understand that the law was written well before we realized what we could do, and there, I know that there is movement from the Senate to add an amendment to a bill to allow us to do that, and they're going to try to get it in ASAP so we can do that. Next, we've run, we've begun advertising the fill, the position of Facilities Director. As you know, the position will now be a school employee versus a town employee, and, um, we hope to have that. I'm never one in favor of suspending the rules for items, as the council is aware. However, we have three items this evening that will need to be done quickly due to the end of the year. First is a change order for the McAllen Dam. As you're aware, we had changed the design after determining there was not sufficient ledge under the dam itself that was built. We've already done this work, as it was necesses, necessary in an emergency, and now we just need to do this to pay the contractor. Secondly, we have a approval of a conservation easement for the Clark Farm. The council has been made aware of this easement earlier in this year. This needs to be done before the end of the year so the Southeastland Trust can receive federal funding. And finally, we have our agreement with Casella Waste Systems. It expires on December 31st, and we've asked for a one-year extension, and they provided that to us. Again, I'm not one to support suspending the rules. We have rules for a reason, and sometimes we need to make sure people follow them, but these are three items that, uh, need to be done quickly. And finally, I would like to, while it looks different, I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, and Happy New Year, since this will be the last meeting. And now I'd ask the police chief to jump in.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Uh, Madam Chair, councilors, I'd like to take a moment to recognize, uh, one of my police officers, uh, as well as his family this evening. In, I learned that Lieutenant Rick Bodett would be retiring at the end of the year. Rick has served this community for 25 years with honor, professionalism, and compassion. Rick began his career in 1995 after he graduated the 108th New Hampshire Police Academy. Early on, he worked in the Patrol Division. He was assigned to the graveyard shift. On July 14th, 2001, just after midnight, then Officer Bodett, while assigned to the graveyard shift, was dispatched to a disturbance on Pulaski Drive. When he showed up at the, on Pulaski Drive, he found a victim by the name of Tong Fatakun, who was on the ground and was bleeding profusely from massive head trauma. Rick rendered aid the best that he could until the ambulance arrived. Unfortunately, Mr. Tong was pronounced dead. Soon after rendering aid, Rick was alerted to the individual who was responsible for this heinous crime. As he was trying to take the person into custody, who had just committed a homicide, he was met with a violent confrontation of his own. Fortunately, Rick's training, his level headiness, and his tactics provided him with the tools to win this confrontation and to take a defendant into custody without any further harm. In 2003, Rick was promoted to the rank of sergeant overseeing a patrol shift and being responsible for making sound decisions on the streets as they happened. He immediately gained the respect of his subordinates by being consistent, firm, and fair with those that he supervised. In 2012, Rick was transferred to the Support Services Division where he worked as a detective. He is responsible for many successful investigations and prosecutions involving crimes against children. In 2016, Rick was recognized by the Child Advocacy Center as a champion for children. This was the result of a 2015 child abuse investigation in which a three-month-old infant sustained 17 broken bones from his head to his toes, including having tooth fractures to his skull. Rick spent many days and nights working this case, many hours at the Boston Children's Hospital, interviewing doctors, families, and witnesses, obtaining physical and visual evidence. Rick was instrumental in the interview of the defendant and later the successful prosecution in which the defendant was found guilty in order to serve a lengthy prison sentence at the New Hampshire State Prison. In 2016, I had the pleasure of promoting Rick to the rank of lieutenant, where he is responsible for many tasks that are seen by his peers but not necessarily seen by the public. In this rank, Rick is responsible for overseeing the entire Support Services Division. This includes criminal investigations, background investigations, internal investigations. He acts as a liaison to the Department Prosecutor, a liaison to the County Attorney's Office. He oversees and ensures compliance of all registered sex offenders living within our community. He's responsible for investigating any crime against a child with the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. He also manages our two school resource offices. This is going to be tough to say goodbye to him. Lieutenant Bodett will be missed by all, especially by me. Throughout his 25-year career, he has been someone that I could turn to for counsel when I had to make difficult and sometimes unpopular decisions. He has been a model employee, a true servant to this community, and a loving father and husband to his family. I wish him the best in all of his future endeavors. And if you would, Madam Chair, I'd like to address his family if I could.
Please.
To, uh, to Rick's mom and dad, Edie and, and Richard Bodett, I know that you're extremely proud of the man that Rick has become. The values that you have instilled in him at a young age of honesty, loyalty, respect for others, spirituality, and community have made him a strong pillar within this law enforcement community here in the Seacoast. It's a direct reflection of the love and guidance that you gave him as a young man. To Rick's daughters, Ashley and Sydney, words cannot express the thanks that we owe you for sharing your dad with us for the past 25 years. Your sacrifices that you made cannot be quantified. Whether it was spending Thanksgiving, Christmas, or your birthdays, home alone without your dad, or whether you were at a ballgame and you looked out into the crowd and dad wasn't there, we recognize it and we thank you. Your personal sacrifices were enormous. I guarantee you and I promise you that your dad will not be missing any more Christmases, Thanksgivings, or birthdays. To Reagan, your patience and understanding of this profession and this lifestyle that comes with bearing, being married to a police officer is nothing less than remarkable. I know at many times, Rick's phone would ring in the middle of the night, and he would rush out of the house without saying a word. I know this because on many times, it was me who was calling him. I know at times, you felt like a single mom, you felt like a single parent at a teacher conference, and a single parent at a talent show. I know at times, you probably felt helpless when you knew something big was going on, and Rick was unable to answer his phone or even return a simple text message telling you that he was okay. I know at times, especially after a tough day, he may ask for a little space, a little quiet time to decompress, because maybe he saw something bad that day or experienced something catastrophic. Reagan, you have handled this career, this last 25 years, with compassion and grace. Your willingness to stand beside Rick through the difficult times as well as the good times and to embrace this crazy lifestyle is appreciated by myself, by every member of the New Market Police Department, and more importantly, this entire community. Thank you, Bodets, for your family sacrifice to this community. Now Reagan, please go enjoy your husband. I know that Rick is on, um, if the council would like to say a few words, I, I know Rick that is on.
Thank you. Um, is there, before I, I'm a crier, everybody knows that, so I'm gonna, I need a minute. But, um, is there anybody else who would like to say anything? All right, then I'm gonna have to.
I'm all, I will discuss it with him and.
God. Um, it's, it's such a shame that we can't, um, we can't celebrate this retirement in person. I have had the opportunity to work with Rick on, um, you know, obviously as a, as a counselor and through the ASAP, uh, group, um, which it's hard to believe, that was, I think, five or six years ago at this point. And, um, and so got to know him through that. And his youngest and my oldest are in the same, you know, they're the same age, and so, um, have seen, you know, Rick and Reagan at events, um, over the years, and we, our community is, um, just so lucky to have had his service. So I will leave it at that so that I don't, um, you know, get too emotional and, um, just want to say thank you for everything that you've done for New Market.
Lieutenant, would you like to say anything? I'll throw you under the bus.
Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
I think, uh, the chief put it very eloquently, um, yeah, um, my family. I can't thank them. Um, and I'm. It's emotional.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks so much. Hi, Reagan. We appreciate everything. And when all of this is over, we can have a big party and, um, and celebrate in person.
Absolutely, look forward to it.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, before we move on, we had, you know, department reports and the town manager's report, and I just wanted to check in and see if there were any, um, questions or comments about, um, either of those items. I'm not seeing anything, um, from the council, and I, so I, I do have a few comments. I wanted to start just by saying, well, first of all, actually, I wanted to ask about voting. And you had mentioned absentee ballots.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, so I'm assuming that we can use the same, you know, no-fault absentee voting.
That's our understanding.
Perfect. Is that enshrined in the law or, no?
No.
Okay.
That was one of the Secretary of State's.
Okay. I mean, I can't imagine that anything will change for, by March, so. Um, great. Um, I wanted to talk just for a second about the department reports, and this is partly for our new councilors, but then also for the public at large. There's so much information in those reports, and that's how we get the majority, I would say, other than the resolutions. That's how we get the majority of our information, um, about what's happening in the town. So, you know, we, we learn about, um, personnel changes. We learn about programming changes. We learn about, you know, what development might be, being worked on through the Planning Department. And so I just encourage the community to read through those reports to find out about kind of what's happening in New Market. I could comment on each report, um, I won't, um, but I did want to highlight a couple of things. And so one was obviously, um, Lieutenant Bodett's, uh, retirement, and so just wanted to, again, wish him well. And then the other thing that I wanted to make sure that I touched on tonight was, um, the Recreation Department. So, um, again, like, we have such a resilient community. We, um, the Giving Tree, uh, ceremony last week, um, last Monday, and, um, so had the light, the tree lighting, and, you know, again, it was different this year, just like so many things, but Amy and her team, um, have just been phenomenal with kind of reimagining all of these different events, like the Mary Main Street and the Giving Tree, and, you know, having a drive-through, uh, opportunities for the kids. And I wanted to make sure that I thanked them for that. I also wanted to highlight that the esports, um, there's some, at least one child in my household who's very excited about that new program. So, um, it's exciting to always have these new opportunities for kids, teenagers, um, uh, adults, and our, our older community also. So that's all I wanted to say about, um, the department reports. And again, I'm not seeing any other requests to speak. So then moving on to committee reports. Are there any, um, committee reports? Counselor Dumont?
Yes, I will, uh, just say that the Budget Committee met on, uh, Monday this week. Here was the town's budget hearing, um, it went well, it's accepted. And then the.
We can't hear, the council can't hear. We can't hear, the council can't hear.
Oh. All of a sudden?
Can you hear us? Can you hear us? Yep, we're back.
Okay.
I'll start over. So the Budget Committee met on Monday, it was the town's public hearing for our budget. It was accepted by the Budget Committee. The ordinance oversight committee was supposed to meet tomorrow evening, but with respect to the town manager's schedule and the police department's schedule, we've postponed until after the holiday season so we can ensure that there's adequate representation from the police department there to weigh in on this issue. Because it's important for the public and the enforcers of our laws that they are able to weigh in on this. So, we will reschedule at some point in the near future. Just keep an eye out for those committee members. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Sanders.
The Arts and Tourism Commission met the other night and we're looking to finalize a date for the downtown art walk. It'll probably be just after Easter in April, finalizing that in January. And we still need one more member to join us. If anyone out there is interested, we'd love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Blackstone.
You're muted.
The Planning Board met and they're still working on the seventy-seven Hershey Lane. This is a development that's in an environmentally sensitive area. The Planning Board had hired a environmental person to come in and evaluate it and that evaluation said that the development should be okay. But then, very recently, the Lamprey River Conservation Commission also hired a biologist and that biologist said that the plan should not go forward in their filing a complaint, I guess, I'm not sure what the exact thing is, with the Fish and Game Commission recommending that the project be stopped. So, it seems to be a project that's been going on for a while and I guess is gonna still be going on for a while.
Sorry, I just wanted to ask, Counselor, that property, seventy-seven Hershey Lane, is that where the open clearing is when you get to the top of the hill? Just on the opposite side of like the, where those townhouses are? I'm just trying to visualize that.
No. It's further down.
Further down.
If you'd see, if you take a right, it turns into Darrell.
Yep.
If you went straight, that's Hershey Lane, there's actually a road that goes, connects, there's a paper road that goes from Grant Road all the way to one oh eight. So it's, it's a classics or paper road right now. They're looking to expand at that point.
It's a, like, kind of trail that goes through.
Exactly.
Right, there's a trail there, there's a river there, yep.
Perfect, thank you, I didn't realize it was property there.
Thank you. Were you all set, Counselor Blackstone?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brayback.
The Conservation Commission met on Thursday. The main, kind of most pressing topic of conversation was the Clark Farm easement, which is on the agenda for later tonight. So I'm just gonna wait until then and we can talk about that when the time comes.
Great, thank you. I wanted to, I don't have a specific committee report, but I did wanna comment on the, at the Budget Committee, the public hearing. And the chairperson at the end kind of made a comment that he hadn't seen an increase in the town budget of this size in kind of recent years and I, it was past the public comment period, so I couldn't comment on Monday, but I just wanted to make sure that I pointed out that the budget that was presented to us and the budget that we approved and forwarded to the Budget Committee, it really doesn't represent, I mean, there is an increase for sure, but it's not like, it's not because of added, it's not because of added anything. It's not added services, it's not added personnel. It's really sort of the cost of doing business and I think that maybe what we've been able to do in years past, not so much the last couple of years, but we've been able to cut in other areas. And I think, it's my opinion that there's not a whole lot more that we can cut. You can only cut, you know, so much postage and so, so many of the little items and our town manager and our town department heads have done a really pretty amazing job, you know, budgeting to actuals and that's been a process over the last, you know, eight years. So, so I just wanted to make sure that I said that we're not, you know, again, we're not but, you know, the cost reflects increased waste management and increased, the increased personnel costs that are contractual or healthcare, that's unavoidable, so. That's all I wanted to mention about that. Counselor Dumont?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, that was one of those things that I kind of noticed during this process is, you know, this Budget Committee was very thorough trying to figure out the justifications for, you know, increases where there were increases, spending where there was spending. A new thing that just goes back to Steve and his team being able to say like, this is the actual reality of what it does cost for our town. And we should be thankful for the services that we do get because I think we drive a pretty good bargain for what we're taxing in terms of what we're getting in return. But it's worth noting as you mentioned.
Thank you. The only other thing that I wanted to mention, I kind of wanted to float this idea and just put it out there, that, you know, we appoint people to boards to represent the town. I haven't mentioned this to you, sorry, Steve. But we, you know, we appoint people to boards, they represent the town, and then we generally don't hear from them. And I didn't know, again, just kind of wanted to put a bug in people's ears about, and maybe we can think about this in the new year, any, you know, I don't wanna ask people to, you know, write a report and submit a report to us, but, but maybe, maybe something or, you know, quarterly, ask people, you know, we have groups, people from New Market sit on the boards of the Coastal Adaptation Group and the Lamprey River Advisory Council and the Stafford Regional Planning Commission and these are groups that do some really important work and it would be great to hear what they're doing and how they're, how the individuals are representing the town and what we should be aware of. So I don't know if it's something that we can think about in the new year. And then that's all I had. And so the next item, we have several resolutions in the second reading. So, the first is Resolution twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one dash fifteen, access to, the access route to the Tucker Well and I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one dash fifteen for access route to the Tucker Well.
Do we want to start with, is Sean here?
Sean is here, he's on the... We've just, we've had discussions with legal counsel on this matter. And Sean, if you just wanna explain what the easement is?
So, the easement is for three things. It's for one, power, also for, to run a water main and to have access. The town would be putting a, installing a water main underneath the driveway from the Tucker Well to, so water could get up to the new treatment facility and we'd be improving the power to the well and on the person's property. And it would allow us to give access, get access to the Tucker Well so that we could do any maintenance. And it would generally be twice a week would be the access, amount of access to that time.
Due to confidentiality, we can't get in the negotiations that we went through. However, we were not able to come to an agreement with the landowner, so this passage of this resolution authorized the town attorney to go forward and have an interim proceeding for an easement on this property.
Thank you. Counselor Dumont?
Yes, just for clarification purposes, I might recommend assuming that the property owner was invited through the opportunity to come out and speak tonight and say a piece or...
Nope, that's not.
Okay.
Yep.
Though he certainly could have through public comment or...
He can, basically, but he just hasn't.
Right.
Any other questions? Or comments? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Sanders, you're muted. Oh, they can't hear us again.
I'm sorry, we can hear, um, Counselor Wendy and Steve, we can't hear Counselor Dumont or Wendy.
Okay. Right. I don't know. I can call a roll. Counselor Sanders. You gotta, I'm muted. Counselor Sanders, you're muted.
Aye.
Thank you. Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Wendy, did you, is that all? Counselor Brayback.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
Thank you. The next item? The next item is Resolution twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one dash sixteen, and that's the VAC truck repair. And I would accept a motion to approve that.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one dash sixteen, VAC truck repair.
And I don't know if Sean wants to...
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the VAC truck is a two thousand and four truck that's used by three different departments, the Water Department, the Sewer Department, and the Public Works Department. It's a very important piece of equipment to us because the sewer departments require to clean so many sewer lines per year for its Neptis permit and for the MS four permit, the Public Works Director cleans all his catch basins and his lines as well. We recently had a, and it also responds to emergencies, sewer backups, and water main breaks and other issues. So it's a very important truck to us. Recently, we had a problem with the truck not working properly. We took the truck to Auto Excellence to get repaired. They recommended that it goes, but went back to the dealer for repairs because it's a specialty truck. The cost to do those repairs is twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. The bulk of that cost was the vacuum compressor assembly, which could only be purchased from the dealer because nobody else makes it because it's that part of that specific truck. So, that was the bulk of the cost. The cost to install it was around fourteen hundred dollars. So, but the problem is, is that we budget so tightly that this amount of money is not available in our budgets. So my recommendation is to pull the money from the Water Capital Reserve, Sewer Capital Reserves, and Department of Public Works Capital Reserves and split evenly.
Are there any questions for Sean? I'm not seeing any, I have a, I have a couple. You mentioned, I think, did you say that the truck was a two thousand and four?
Yes.
Have we done some work to it in the recent past? I feel like this has come up.
So, so five years ago, we made the decision to not purchase a new one, to rehabilitate this one because the thought was, and we spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go through the but at that time, the cost to purchase a new truck was thirty thousand dollars. And we figured that if we spent the one fifty, we'd see some costs, some expenses along the way, but we would know, we would not see the three hundred and thirty that would have cost for a new truck. So, with this thirty, roughly thirty, to the one fifty or one eighty, we're still far below the three thirty of a new truck at that point in time. And that was four or five years ago, so we're still way ahead of the game.
And how long do you think that we would be keeping this truck?
I'm expecting to keep it another six years anyway.
Great, thank you. Counselor Dumont?
Sean, when you did that thorough check and drop, was this an issue that was noticed at any point or is a possibility? Or what do you want to do, did you see any other things that we might need to keep an eye on over the next few years that we have this truck for that'll still keep us under that three hundred thousand dollar number?
I will tell you, the truck's in great shape and this is the main important piece of the truck. Normally you would rebuild this piece that we just installed, but it's, it was too far gone to rebuild it and the rebuilding cost would be around thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars. But it was too far gone to save it. So, if this, if five or six years down the road, if this happens again, the expectation at most would be a rebuild to it.
Alright, fair enough, thank you.
I'm not seeing any other questions or comments, so if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Brayback.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next item that we have is Resolution twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one dash seventeen, and that is the Downtown TIF resolution, and I would accept a motion to approve that.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one dash seventeen for the Downtown TIF.
Is there a second?
This is our annual, in order to pay the bond, we have to remove the money from the Capital Reserve Fund and we cannot pay it off early, so even though we have the money in the TIF fund, so we have to do this annually as a house cleaning item.
Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Brayback.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
The next item is Resolution twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one dash eighteen, and that is the South Main Street reclassification from Route one oh eight to Grant Road. And I would accept a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one dash eighteen, requesting the reclassification of South Main Street.
Did you wanna?
Sure. We were approached by the Department of Transportation earlier in the year to work together to reclassify that portion of one fifty-two, which's South Main Street, basically go from a state road to a town road. We already maintain it, for the most part, except paving, which was done recently. We plow the sidewalks, we drop the blade when we need to plow through there. So it's really not much of additional cost to us except future maintenance. This does help us because instead of trying to receive permission from the state, anytime we need to do a project on that portion of road, we will control it and we can do that. And we will be having a large project with the South Main Street water main replacement coming up soon. That's what triggered this discussion. For example, though, we did have an issue when we installed crosswalk lights that weren't up to state standard, so we had to rip them out and redo them to what is a much larger portion than what's needed. We did have a bridge evaluation done on the railroad crossing because that would be ours. The engineers said there's no issues with that, so we can move, that, there's nothing that raises a red flag with that. And we recommend that we, request from the commissioner to reclassify that to a town road.
Are there any questions? Do we have a sense of, I'm not seeing any, so I'm gonna go ahead and ask mine. Do we have a sense of what the long-term cost impacts could be for the bridge?
We don't. The last time they upgraded it, I believe...
Ninety-three.
Yep, so, and it's still way within the lifespan of a bridge, so.
According to the backup materials that we... According to the, um, the backup materials that we received, it looked like it was a, I don't know if you would call that a complete rebuild or, you know, pretty, pretty significant renovations to the, to the bridge at the time. Um, it's still classified as, um, very good. I guess that was the, the rating that it, that it had. Um, I'm just cons- I, I, I guess I'm questioning what the cost of the annual maintenance is because that was recommended that we continue to provide the annual maintenance and concrete sealer. And then my other question is, um, what kind of impacts there could be if we had to do anything to the bridge with, dealing with Pan Am? So are we kind of trading dealing with New Hampshire DOT? Potentially dealing with, um, Pan Am, and is that better?
Pan Am, as of ne- last week or this week, is no longer the owner of the line. It's now gonna be C T X, which is a larger corporation. But we, from my understanding, would be better to deal with than the current, uh, group. As for regular maintenance, I s- I'd ask the public works director. I'm trying to wake him up. If he's wrecked.
Was he on the call?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
So it's not that expensive to seal the bridge. The, the annual maintenance is washing the bridge with water and then sealing it, and it's, it's like a couple hundred dollars.
Thank you. Are there any other, um, any other questions? I'm seeing none, so if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Brayback.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Uh, the next item that we have is Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash nineteen. Um, and that is, let me make sure I read the title right, um, to include a bond for a million dollars to improve the stormwater system on New Road on the twenty twenty-one town warrant. And I would accept a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash nineteen to include a bond for one million to improve the stormwater system on New Road on the twenty twenty-one town warrant.
Yeah, as we've previously discussed, this has been a long goal of the town council to improve the drainage in the New Road area. Um, we've already begun the process by purchasing, um, some land in there for retention ponds a few years ago. We were notified by the State Revolving Loan Fund that we received ten percent forgiveness on a loan from them. Um, and it's estimated at one million dollars to complete this project. And we would like to do at the same time that we're gonna be opening up New Road for the water main replacement in the area, so we don't open up the road twice, we can do it once. And we just would ask that we put it on the bond, on the ballot for this year for approval.
Counselor Dumont.
Uh, Steve, what was the timeline of this project?
I believe it'd be, Sean, if you're there, I believe it's designed this ye- if after this is passed or finished design, and this summer begin and then finish the next year, Sean?
So what it's looking at is, we're looking to finish the design now. Um, the design would probably be complete, uh, late spring. Then we'd have to bid it, so the earliest this project would get done would be in the fall of this year. More likely, if there's some holdups on some permitting and things, the latest that would be done would be the spring of twenty-two. So fall of twenty-one, spring of twenty-two.
Please.
Um, and do we have an idea of what the general impact is gonna be in terms of, uh, the commuter traffic in that area?
Oh, it'll be sign- it'll be significant. I mean, we'll have.
Are we thinking similar to the work that we had done with, uh, the state project one oh eight? In terms of backups and whatnot, or?
New Road?
Uh, when we had done the, um, when.
I mean, no, because New Road's not as heavily traveled as one oh eight.
Right, I just wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Probably more like if we were to do something on Ash Swamp Road.
Right, or Grant Road or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, ultimately, the best thing would be to be able to shut down and have one entrance. So you could just get in, get out versus having traffic holdups, but we'll figure it out once we get there.
Uh, I'm not seeing any other comments, and so I just also wanted to mention, it, you know, I'm in support of this. It makes sense to do it now, especially with I, because of the, um, the ten percent forgiveness on the loan. I think that that really just it's impossible to say no to that, so, um, so I'm not seeing any other comments, and, um, if you could call the roll, please.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Brayback.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
And our next item is ordinance number four. Uh, the floodplain protection overlay district. And I would accept a motion to approve that ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number four for the floodplain protection overlay.
Um, yeah, we've had the public hearing. I mean, it's the change the maps. The, there is one request for an amendment from the planning board, and you received a letter from the chair. It's, I don't, I'm not seeing it as structurally significant that we could, that we need a full motion, that it's more editorial, so I don't think you need to amend it. We'd just include that, uh, amendment in the, in the finalized one. It's not, it's not a amendment of substance, and it's an editorial amendment.
So we can approve the ordinance.
Approve it, but that one portion because it's not, again, it's not a, a, it's not an amendment of substance, it's an amendment of editorial nature.
And did, um, Diane Hardy, did she?
Diane, do you wanna? Anything else, or? You're muted, Diane.
Just that I, you know, I think these changes are pretty, uh, straightforward. It's to adopt the maps, there's some editorial changes, there's some definition changes, and the real substantive one is the new regulations for the floodway, which, um, Ms. Gilbert reviewed with you. So, you know, we also have, uh, a copy of the ordinance showing the specific changes and the specific recommendations from the planning board. And yes, I, I agree with Steve's assessment that, um, certainly the planning board amendment is really not a uh, substantive change. It's one that really is editorial to clarify the intent of the ordinance, so there's not any conflicts. So I would recommend if the board, uh, was so inclined to go forward with uh, adoption of the ordinance this evening, so we can get the certification off to the state, um, in January. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I am not seeing any other, um, questions, uh, from counselors, so if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Brayback.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, and now we have resolutions in the first reading. Um, the first is Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash twenty, and that's increasing the elderly exemption. Uh, whereas the town of Newmarket has adopted the provisions of RSA seventy-two colon thirty-nine dash A, allowing for exemptions for the elderly on their property values. Whereas the town council, as a legislative body, may amend the exemption amount, income levels, and asset limits in accordance with RSA seventy-two colon twenty-seven A. Now therefore be it resolved by Newmarket Town Council that the elderly exemption shall be amended to the following effective April first, twenty twenty-one. And those exemptions are listed. I don't think I will read all of those numbers. Um, acceptable to the council. First reading December sixteenth, twenty twenty. The next item that we have is Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one, and that is the Clark Farm easement approval. Um, and I would accept a motion to, um.
Read it first.
Oh, you want me to read it first? Okay.
Then the motion's coming.
Okay. Um, whereas the town of Newmarket Conservation Commission, in conjunction with the Southeast Land Trust, wishes to conserve approximately one hundred and seventy-five acres known as the Clark Farm, and whereas the Newmarket Conservation Commission has approved seventy-five thousand dollars from its conservation funds to achieve this, now therefore be it resolved by Newmarket Town Council that the town council accepts as ex- executory interest in the Clark Farm agricultural land easement on approximately one hundred and fifty point fourteen acres of land located off Camp Lee Road, tax map R six lot forty-three, subject to legal review and approval by the town's attorney. Further, the town council authorizes the town manager to sign all documents on behalf of the town. First reading December sixteenth, twenty twenty, and I would accept a motion to suspend the rules. To consider this this evening.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules, so this can be considered this evening.
Any questions or comments on the suspension of the rules? Um, seeing none, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Brayback.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Any motion to approve?
So now I would accept a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, Clark Farm easement approval.
Sorry, may?
Yes, please.
Um, as was mentioned, you know, this would came up before to the council from the Conservation Commission a number of months ago. There, uh, with Southeast Land Trust, there was some concern on the council side that a portion of the land was in the town of Epping. And why were we paying for everything in the town of, that sometimes in Epping, but the Epping has agreed to share. So our price went down, and the Conservation Commission has already approved it, and the council now is just accepting that easement.
Any questions or comments for the town manager? I'm seeing none. Just say that I think that it's, uh, fantastic that we've been able to work with Southeast Land Trust and, um, and conserve, uh, such a large portion of land, um, here in our town. So seeing no other, um, comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Brayback. Counselor Brayback.
Sorry, uh, aye.
Um. Sorry. Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Great, thank you. The next item that we have is Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two, and that is the, um, McKellen Dam change order. So I will read that. Uh, so approving the McKellen Dam change order, whereas the town of Newmarket at the twenty nineteen town meeting approved a bond to refurbish the McKellen Dam, and whereas the McKellen Dam project has had a major change order and redesign on the left abutment of gate installation. It was anticipated that bedrock would be approximately two feet below the existing gate structure. After the demo was complete, it was found to be twelve to fifteen feet below. And whereas, GZA determined using micro piles as a solution. The total cost of the change order is a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. The town's contractor, SOMCO, agreed to reduce the current contract by forty-eight thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-eight cents by utilizing town staff and equipment to complete certain work, leaving an additional eighty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and twelve cents needed. And whereas, the McKellen Dam Capital Reserve Fund has forty-seven thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-eight cents remaining in it. And whereas, it was determined to be an emergency by the team, and the work has already been completed. Now therefore be it resolved by Newmarket Town Council that the town council approves the aforementioned change order and authorizes the withdrawal of forty-seven thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars from the McKellen Dam Capital Reserve Fund and the remaining thirty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars coming from the FY twenty twenty twenty-one operating budget. First reading December sixteenth, twenty twenty, and I to a motion to suspend the rules, um, this evening to approve, uh, this resolution.
I will make a motion to suspend the rules this evening, so we can approve this resolution. Uh-oh.
Any questions on, um, the suspension of the rules? Seeing none, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Brayback.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
And now I'd accept a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution dash twenty twenty-one, wait, twenty twenty dash twenty-one, twenty-one dash twenty-two. Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, we've been pretty self-explanatory when we did this project. We didn't know what was under the dam. When they got in there, they determined that the, it was further down than needed, so we had to re-engineer it and to come up with some new uh, plans of the way to do this. The team worked diligently to try to figure ways to do this. Um, this was the best bet. Nobody wanted to be in this position, but it happens sometimes. And you try to get, or something you gotta get under there. Um, the public works director's here, if you have any other questions, um, because he's overseeing that project.
I am not seeing any. I, I think, I, and Rick doesn't need to answer this, uh, because I'm pretty sure that I read in the, um, in our materials that they're not expecting any other, any other surprises in the project. This was kind of the big one, so, um, I just kinda wanted to say that publicly. Um, so I'm not seeing any other questions, so if you could call the roll.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Brayback.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Madam Chair, Counselor Burns needs to, uh, get a charger for her laptop, which is dying, and she's not here right now.
So should we wait a minute?
I, I, I can move on.
Okay. Um, it'll take me a little bit to read this. So it's Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three, and that's the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two default budget. Whereas accordance with New Hampshire revised statutes annotated forty colon thirteen, Roman numeral nine, B, the town council must approve a default budget in case the budget proposed by the municipal budget committee fails a town meeting. And whereas, the default budget is determined by taking the previous year's approved operating budget, increasing it by any contractual obligations, and reduced by any one-time expenditures. And whereas, the town manager and finance director determined this amount to be thirteen million four hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the default budget in the amount of thirteen million four hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars is adopted. First reading December sixteenth, twenty twenty. We're not suspending the rules for this.
No.
Okay. The next item that we have is Resolution, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, and that's the Casella One Year Agreement, uh, proposal. I'm just opening that. Approving One Year Casella Resource Solution Agreement. Whereas the towns.
Town of Newmarket.
Wishes to extend its contract with Casella Resource Solutions for one year. And whereas Casella Resource Solutions made the following proposals for curbside solid waste and recycling services. And that's curbside, uh, municipal solid waste per ton. A hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. Uh, curbside recycling per ton, and that's two hundred and seventy-two dollars and eight cents. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council. That the Town Council authorizes the town manager to enter into an agreement with Casella Resources, Resource Services for one year. First reading December sixteenth, twenty twenty, and, um, I would again accept a motion to suspend the rules.
Counselor Burns not here, she's not.
I will make a motion to suspend the rules, um, on approving, uh, Resolution twenty twenty slash twenty twenty one dash twenty-four. Approving One Year Casella Resource Solution Agreement.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Brayback's second.
Thank you. Um. I'm, it, it, are there any questions or comments about the suspension of the rules? Seeing none, if you could call the roll.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel.
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone.
Aye.
Counsel Brayback.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you, so next I would accept a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty one dash twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution twenty twenty slash twenty twenty one dash twenty-four, approving One Year Casella Resource Solution Agreement.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Again, it's pretty self-explanatory, um, there is a substantial increase in recycling. I'm trying to remember the exact number, I'm trying to find my report. Um, but we knew that was gonna happen due to the market. And, um. Yeah, other than that, that's. One more year with Casella and we'll go up to bid, so we can get a longer agreement. I do wanna let the council know that, that we will be doing it on our own. Because of the fact that the town of Newfields did not continue with Casella. And, um, the town of Stratum went with a different system. They went with, um, a cur- automatic curbside pickup with trucks, something that if we were to enter into. Cost us more money. It wouldn't, they're doing it to save money, but on our situation, because we're more urban, it would cost us more money. That's it.
Oh, okay. Uh, are there any questions?
Counsel Burns is rejoining right now.
Okay. I was looking to find, um, the backup, and I can't find it either.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not seeing any, um. Any questions, so if you could call the roll.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone.
Aye.
Counsel Brayback.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Um. Are there any closing comments? I am not seeing any, so, um. I just wanted to say as we are preparing for our first big storm. Um, I appreciate certainly our D P W Director joining us tonight, I know he's gonna have a busy, uh. Day or two ahead of him, and I just wanted to make sure that I gave a shout out to him and to the, and to the staff, uh, all the D P W, uh, staff. Cause we know how hard you work and how vital your role is in our community, so, uh, we appreciate you. Especially, you know, in the holiday season, it's not easy leaving your family to go and plow, um, but we're grateful for everything that you do. So, thank you, um. And then I also wanted to make sure that I had the opportunity to mention, you know, we have two employees retiring at the end of the year. Um, obviously, we mentioned, uh, Lieutenant, uh, Bodett earlier. And I also wanted to make sure that I had this opportunity to recognize Donna Dougal also in the town clerk's office. Um, for a lot of people, I think that the, that their one interaction with town staff. Um, might be the town clerk's office, you know, you go and you register your car, or you register your dog, or, uh, you pay your taxes, hopefully. Um, and, you know, they're often, the people in that office are the face of our town. And so Donna has been one of those people who, you know, um, who greets residents as they, as they go about their business. Um, we've been really lucky. And, um, we're even luckier that she's gonna be remaining as a, as a part-time employee, so it's not really a goodbye. Um, but, uh, we hope that, you know, she enjoys her extra time. Um, and just wanna say thank you for your service and your continued service to Newmarket. So, and with that, I just wanna wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And, um, we will see you on January sixth for our next meeting. And I am not seeing any other, um, comments, so, um, I will consider us adjourned.
Thank you, bye.
Thank you.